Okay, welcome to Queenence County Board of Education Work Session for March 20th. The first item on the agenda is vacant board member seat process. Just for the information of the public, Carrie O'Connor resigned for personal reasons and so we are in the process of getting a replacement for her. And the way the process works, Mrs. Wright found out all the information. Basically, we send out a notice to the community on all kinds of websites and different press, and I've got a list for you all. She's got a list for you there. Well, I've got it right here. So at the break, you can take a look at it, make sure everybody's included in it. And this is one of the lists we've had in the past. And so I've crossed off some, we've crossed off some things that we don't think apply, but you've got the list there. So if you have any changes, just let Mrs. Wright know at the break of what you think we should put in there, people we should include, or people we should not, for some reason they're in here and shouldn't be. And what we're going to send out to the, to this list, which is mostly newspapers and media outlets, is a statement. And at the same time, we're asking for someone to serve on the Board of Education, we also need to get three new members of the Ethics Committee. We've had the same Ethics Committee for the last, I don't know, 10 years probably. And according to our handbook, we're supposed to do it a lot more often than that, change them out. So we are re-establishing our Ethics Committee. And so we're going to read out to the Queenence County Board of Education is looking for county citizens to fill a seat on the Queenence County Board of Education and three vacant seats on the Ethics Committee. Anyone interested in filling the vacant seat on the Board of Education is encouraged to apply through the Governor's Appointment Office website. And we're providing a link on our Queenence County Public School website. We're going to run this opportunity for people to apply from March 21st to April 21st. So they need to, or they can search the web under Governor's Appointment Office. It's appointed by the governor when it's an interim appointment. The person will fill the job until we have a new election and then we'll replace where that person could run for election. Those interested in filling vacancies on the Ethics Committee are encouraged to send a letter of interest and a brief resume to, and we have a website down here, or an email address, ethicscommittee@qacps.org. Or they can send in a mail to Mrs. Wright, and the address of the Board of Education is here. And any questions, Mrs. Wright has provided her phone number here at work. Any questions about that? Okay, next item is the school board retreat days. We've had on the calendar a while that we were trying to arrange a retreat for us to collaborate as a team. Right now, we have a, we're, I'm trying to limit some of the meetings because we're getting killed with meetings, but we do need a full day of a retreat. So what we have is, we have the current retreat, we do once a year, which isn't really a retreat, but it's a, it's an event we have at Chesapeake College. All the school boards on the eastern shore, school boards show up usually as a group, the full school board. It goes from like 8:30 to 3:00 in the afternoon. They have guest speakers and it, and they provide lunch. Some businesses provide lunch. And it's a really nice event, gets us to be able to do something outside and gives us some good information for the future and also to be able to look, meet board members from the other boards. It gives a chance to talk to their other boards about things that they're dealing with and issues like we have. That is scheduled and has been on the schedule for June 17th for a long time. It's after school is let out, hopefully. Probably hopefully now it's just raining. So that's on June 17th, and that's all the superintendents and their boards. So it's a nice event. So if you're, it would be great to have our whole board attend that if they are available. So then the retreat we want to have just for our board, I've talked to our superintendent and decided to move that later so that you're not crammed in with too many all-day meetings, particularly for those who work and have to take leave when they, when any event.
For our new board members.
Right. So that's what I was thinking, we can go, we were thinking of maybe doing it either late summer or early in the fall, after schools started and settled, and then have our retreat and see where we go from there. So if that's okay with you all, I'd like to put that off until then. We may come up with a nice, a nice program. We're still talking about how we're going to do that and, and just to make that more effective. And like Tammy said, when everybody's here, it's probably a good idea. So if you're all okay with that, I'll, we'll move that to later in the fall. You okay with that, Tammy? We don't have to vote. Okay. The next item is the superintendent's evaluation tool. My question for you, I forgot to brief ahead of time, do you think they, all of them need to be there, or is this something that maybe just we could work out? It's not secretive or anything?
No, it's not a secret, but I appreciate that in light of their time. So they certainly are free to go forward and do whatever you need to do in terms of meetings or work that you have to do. If you like to stay, you are free to do that either way.
Could I make recommendations since they're already here? Why don't we do the closed session? I mean, just to facilitate.
We can't, we can't change it this, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Oh, and I forgot to prove the agenda. I just want to forget to do that. But I, I think you, I'd like to just move through and get through this. I've only planned about 15 minutes for that closed session. Is that all you need for the closed session, right? So that's just going to be only about 15 minutes. So it's okay with you. I'd like to just stay where we are. And we'll just call them. I imagine we'll call them around 1:30 to come back and then we'll go, we'll do our closed session right here. We're not going to convene for them to close out if it's not required, based on our OMA training we just got, so. Okay, so how about we see you guys back around 1:30 then?
Okay, thank you.
Uh huh. Thank you. But if you want to listen in on this, this is fascinating stuff.
I might be interested in it.
Yeah. Okay, to start this off, this is, I'm looking forward to us doing this and getting it completed.
Get time to swing by.
Just to review, we're working on an instrument for the evaluation of the superintendent.
May I interject real quickly?
Sure.
Why are we not doing this in closed session?
It's not really necessary. We're not, we're not dealing with personal things that, that the superintendent does. We're developing a tool.
Okay, I just need clarification.
Yeah, that's all. We're just developing a tool to use for evaluations. So this is, should be done in public so they know how we're doing it. Yeah, I didn't tell you we had changed that from closed for that reason, Tammy.
Thank you.
We, we had a great, great training with that OMA. I learned a lot and reviewed a lot of things, so hopefully we can get every person attending the Open Meetings Act training because it makes a lot of sense and learned a few extra tips for what we used to do or don't do, and things that we've done too much of, so. So basically, creating on the, on the instrument, the superintendent is, is a vital part of this discussion. I need, for her to participate, we need her to give us guidance. One thing, we don't want to put down so much stuff that it's impossible for her to do it. So she's the best judge on that, you know?
Him or her.
Yeah, him or her, right. I'm just talking for our crew. But yeah, this is, we want to develop this so we can use it for any superintendent. That's the goal. And so, but we need their input. Now, they don't, they can't tell us what kind of instrument to use or what to put in here, but, but they are part of the decision processes, the whatevs and how can we do this kind of thing?
Sure.
So that we're all operating together.
Absolutely, and I agree. And it's, I think I'd be able to offer some feedback as to the practicality of some of those so that you have some ideas of what we have and what we do in the district so you can make some decisions, you know, about what indicators go on this tool. If I may, I have a couple of documents that I think might be helpful for the discussion when you're ready for me to distribute them, so you just let me know.
Yeah, I'll keep that in mind, just to complete this discussion. What, we ended up making a decision, right? We, we got some tools from different counties and based on input from you all on the board, you wanted to, you liked Alleghenies and Wycomicos. Allegheny, Allegheny and Wycomico, we had Baltimore, we had a whole bunch of different ones. So I combined the Allegheny and Wycomico to keep points that you all mentioned to me that you thought were, were the good parts of those instruments. Combined them into one process here, one instrument, trying to pull together your ideas and pull together what I think would apply to our district. So this is, this is going to be a new tool and because we have a, I'm sorry, let me clear, go back. We have a contract for the superintendent. And in that contract, we had specific dates that we had to meet. And in that contract, it was, there were dates required for in January, there were dates of things we had to do by September. These things did not occur, so we stopped and we're starting fresh. So the first page I provided you is a draft of the evaluation process dates that we use from here going forward. So ordinarily, she would be, we would do this, beginning of this in September, but since we didn't, obviously we're behind. So she's going to have about four or five months to, to meet the requirements we have today, but I have looked at her goals that she set way back and we've tried to, and I've tried to accommodate those things in there. So along the way, she's been doing them, doing what, what's in this instrument. And then I'm sure she will let us know if there's some things that she just can't do, and that's kind of what I talked to her about, you know, that's why we need her input, because I don't want to make something impossible for her to succeed with. So the new, the new kind of timeline of what we're doing is that top page, which talks about some things we were going to do, we should have. I put ordinarily, we would have had a January 31st and then be done July 31st. However, because today is March 20th, we're doing our tool today. The mid-year meeting we're going to have for her is going to be May 15th. And then the end of year is back to July 31st. So I've, I've laid that out on this page here. And then by September 15th, we'll start over for the next year and we'll go into the timeline for her contract. Now, our lawyer is going to write up the change to this and try to, you know, that reflects these dates and give them to her. So we have a mutual understanding of the change that we've made just for this year. And then we want to get right back on track, yes.
September, we'll go right back to.
Right back to what's in her contract. Correct. Now, not to say that she hadn't provided. In September, she did her part and provided the goals. And, pardon?
Yeah.
And then, so, so her part has been being done. It's just been the board that hadn't been responding where we should have. So we're starting fresh and trying to do it right. And now we need to dig in. My thought on this, this is going to be hard, but at least it's just a few of us to go through it. What I'm, I've been toying with what the heck we can do for, for attacking this. And I think the best way to do it is just to go performance indicator by performance indicator, one at a time. But if you have thoughts, yeah, please.
I'd like to see what superintendent has to add to this because, you know, I'd like to see some fresh eyes on, on this tool.
Sure. So what I'm going to provide are some samples, and these samples are coming from AASA, that's the Superintendent's Association, as well as NSBA, National School Boards Association. And it references standards that are typical, providing you with standards that are, that are coming from AASA, providing you with some description of those, of those standards. And also within each standard, there are performance domains, just as we have on the draft one, and so I'm giving you a reference point. So some other language that might be included for each one of those standards so that we can sort of have something to, to judge our draft by. Maybe get some more ideas, maybe say, okay, this is perfect, it's right on track, this is what I want to measure, or maybe this one isn't quite measurable. So I'm going to forward, I'm going to pass out several of these documents, so if you just bear with me. Yeah, it's got several, because our draft has seven standards. The one that I'm distributing to you has six. I'm also going to forward to you a checklist from National School Boards Association for, that might be helpful as we look at the evaluation process.
You have eight standards on this page here.
I'm going to walk you right through.
Okay.
And then I'm also going to forward to you, just in the event that we get to this, this is the draft goals, my draft goals for this year. We can take a look at those. And whether or not it's relevant, I think that it is. This is also some evidence, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Evidence of attainment and progress toward meeting the goals that I had provided to the school board last year so that you can have an idea of what we're, of what we're talking about when we talk about how do we, how do we measure attainment toward those goals. So these, you've got several documents, and I can start us at, I think, the one that's going to be most important or significant for us right now. And that is the one that is called Sample Superintendent Domains Standards and Performance Now, when, when I look at this one side by side with our draft, the first thing I want to see is whether or not we are touching on the most relevant standards that are basically acceptable across the county. I do have a document, I'm not sure that I distributed it, I did not distribute it, I don't think. I do, yes, I did. I gave you another document that shows you what standards are measured for superintendents across the state. So you've got several things here, but when we look at our draft and we look at the sample standards, we pretty much are in alignment. Now, we call them some, a couple of different things, but we have one for vision, we have a standard, standard one, visionary leadership, while AASA's document didn't call it visionary leadership, they call theirs planning and assessment. But when you unpack that standard, you'll see that there are a lot of the same things that we're talking about. Our standard two is policy and governance, and AASA also recommends a policy and governance. We have a standard three as communications and community relations. You'll see, AASA also recommends communications, community relations, so we're right in alignment there. We're also in alignment for our standard four for organizational leadership, which is captured by AASA. We have leadership and curriculum instruction and assessment, and AASA calls theirs instructional leadership. We have our standard six as human resource management and labor relations. While AASA doesn't have that particular one, there are some items with, as we unpack, that can be found throughout the document. And then we have ethical leadership for standard seven, and AASA just terms it differently and they call it professionalism. So right off the bat, we know that we're right in there as measuring, attempting to measure the appropriate standards. And if you just want to double-check yourself, the document that has the blue chart on it, building and evaluation system, if you pull to the second, if you turn, switch to the second page, and I apologize for the small print, but you can see across the country, several states are here, and they show you which standards that they are measuring their superintendent by, and a lot of them clearly are the same as, as the ones that we just mentioned for both AASA as well as our draft document. So that's just to confirm that we're basically in the right ballpark here. And the front, on the front page of that same document, you'll see some standards, and on this particular one, there are eight standards, but you'll see that for the most part, they are the same. Human resources is included on this document for standard seven. And there's a little key descriptors, descriptors, so that we can understand exactly what that standard is measuring and align that to what we said we want to measure. So we've got a few documents in front of us, and I think what we probably need to do is really begin to unpack our standards, and we certainly can start wherever you want to start. If you want to start at visionary leadership, then we certainly can do that. AASA's document, again, calls it planning and assessment, but we can go right down our list and we can do some comparisons, and we can look at the language for measuring these standards.
Here's a question. Since we have leadership and curriculum instruction assessment, wouldn't that fall under planning and assessment?
Actually, not for AASA. That's instructional assess, instructional leadership.
So this is planning and assessment is actually?
For instruction, academics.
I'm talking about under this?
It's visionary, our standard one.
Yeah, we have visionary leadership, so we should say she calls it planning and assessment.
Right, we're right, yeah. I thought I mentioned that. So it, planning and assessment for AASA is our visionary.
Okay.
Mm-hmm. And if you're looking at that AASA document, the last one at the bottom for professionalism, that's what we would consider the ethics standards.
Could we call it professionalism and values? We could call it whatever we want.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah. So we can change.
So we could start with standard one then? Let's just delve into it. So we'd look at how this, planning and assessment, to be sure we have incorporated the key things?
Well, first of all, the performance ratings. Does anyone have trouble with performance ratings?
Yeah, okay.
And you want to add to that?
Yeah, that would be what, what we, yeah. Would you have any changes you've looked at for the performance ratings on number one? And, and the indicators is what we're, we're comparing right now, right? Is that what you're saying?
Yes. So you've identified four ratings.
Right.
Categories. Ineffective, needs improvement, effective, and highly effective.
Correct.
And then in the draft, you've identified some language that would help us sort of serve as a rubric almost for what is, what would be considered ineffective, what would be considered needs, needing improvement and so forth for each of the standards.
Right.
So it's a decision that you want to make if you like the language of these ratings categories, or if you want to change them.
Do you have something that, that you kind of, would correlate with this to give us, basically for number one?
We're just going to look at.
Well, I just want to, first of all, I want to set the performance rating.
Right.
I'm not, I'm not going to, I don't have anything that's going to make a change to that, although some, you know, some performance ratings are sort of ratings scales, so from zero to five or one to five, some say proficient, or some say met or not met. So any of those are generally acceptable. I don't take any issue with the categories that you, you know, identify here.
Yeah, because I think they're, I mean, I like those. I like four, it keeps it a little more simple, and some of them had six.
Mm-hmm.
They're like, yeah, it's kind of like pulling teeth, which one's separate from the other.
And I know in our sit plans, we always had met and unmet to keep it even more simple. So that's what I was trying to get to, where we could.
I think, I think, you know, met and unmet or not met is a hard line. So, you know, if, if we didn't meet it, if I didn't meet it, then more work has to be done, but we need to say, you know, to what degree. Are we close or are we, are not, just do it at all? You know, and that met, not met doesn't generally capture that.
Okay. And you're okay with the performance ratings? Just that first, first batch of here?
Yeah, I'm fine with this one.
You see that, the main, right at the very beginning of the, of the, this is for every one of them. It tells what ineffective is, what needs improvement is, yeah. So if we're good on those, I see what you mean, Tammy. So we move into the visionary leadership one, which is planning and assessment, right?
Mm-hmm.
And on this, we had, we pretty had some concerns on the ethics leadership, the seventh standard. So we really, it's very subjective, so we were going to, we were just going to remove that one because it's way too subjective. It's, it ended up being, well, in the past, it ended up being whether they liked you or not, whether they liked the superintendent or not. And that doesn't do anybody any good.
But with this, this thing, luckily, we have this piece of paper from superintendent, gives us some indicators of professionalism, which we could incorporate under that. We could call it ethical leadership and professionalism and apply some of these standards, which would, you know, correlate across the board. Well, and starting with visionary leadership, going in here, I'm reading these performance indicators, there's actual tangible empirical data that we can use rather than making it so subjective in the indicators that we have.
Oh, you mean this? You mean the planning and assessment piece here?
Yes. So I'm starting with standard one, visionary leadership, if we even called it visionary leadership, planning and assessment, comma, planning, comma, and assessment, and then applied some more of these indicators here, because I'm, what I'm seeing here is reviews and analysis of student academic achievement, provides staff with collaborative effort data, plans and implements changes in programs, reviews, annual analyses. I mean, that's, that's something that's tangible.
Okay.
Rather than being so subjective, which was my comment. I had all through here, there's no empirical data, there's nothing tangible. I, I wanted to make it.
Measurable.
Measurable and not so subjective. That was my whole part about all of this. So seeing this, I would be glad to incorporate more of this into here and then under our suggested data and documentation, pulling from this, it's just a few things, but it definitely does help. Am I getting offline?
Are you on this domain, are you on this page here, domain A?
I'm under domain A, planning and assessment, yes.
So some of the indicators that Ms. Harper was talking about, she was just pulling from this list of performance indicators here.
Yes, it's just a few more things, I mean, to add, but it expands.
And, and it gives me something concrete to share with you as evidence.
Right.
So do we present where we are in terms of our strategic plan? Do we share data, district data?
Right.
Have we disaggregated that data down to the school level? Have we worked with schools to improve student performance and employee or teacher performance, that type of thing?
Here, demonstrates a working knowledge and understanding of the state educational standards. I mean, you would think that you know that, but have you demonstrated the fact that you do?
And how do you know?
How do you know? Well, you've talked about co-mart during our meetings. You, you know, you've sent out documents to us that, you know, relate back to state law. I mean, that to me would be tangible evidence.
I think just in different wording, some of these are already in here.
Yes.
Under the indicators.
Implement strategies for inclusive, inclusion of staff and various stakeholders. It's, it, this, this would expand what you have here, but it would be, be able to be measurable.
So just to be concise, so where we have on our draft document, performance indicators, and we have 1.1, 1.2, so forth, the document from AASA would say, performance standard A1, right? And then give a description for that, analyzing and using data for decision-making. Standard A2, organized collaborative development implementation of a district strategic plan. At standard three, so it's, it's still laid out the way that you have, just with more language describing what that standard is. And I'm not saying that one is any better than the other because they basically incorporate some of the same things, it's just a matter of how we would like to word it.
Well, it's defining what each of these indicators would incorporate.
So when we get to the next part for the categor, ratings categories, we can be more prescriptive with regard to what pieces of evidence are going to confirm that Dr. Kane is effective or highly effective in this stand, with this standard.
So the word standard is a little confusing because they're using domains, and there's standards all over the domains, so.
Right, and that's just the organization.
Without having to read, yeah, I don't want to have to redo the whole thing.
Right. And I don't think you need to. I think that having standard there is the right, is the right thing. I think that's, you know, the right order. Even if you, even if you broke it down and, and said that we're going to call these.
Indicators.
Standards, right, and these indicators.
Correct.
Then we're still, we're still getting to.
We're still using the same thing.
Exactly.
But then under 1.1, collaborative develops and implements a shared vision and mission, pull from here and just do bullet points of what. pull from here and just do bullet points of what that encompasses. So, you know, you're just, that, it's just explaining, because we, when we're not, no longer the board, people coming behind us need to be able to understand what the document means.
Okay, I got it. If we kept mostly the format we have, is what you're saying, but.
Oh, absolutely.
So we've got these performance indicators, say, number one, point one, performance indicator, just what you said. So what are we doing to that? You're comparing.
Okay, so develops and implements a shared vision and mission. Over here, superintendent plans, implements, supports, and assesses structural programs. Quite a few of these things would relate to this. I'm just, I just would like to have more bullet points on here to understand what that indicator is asking for.
Oh, so you're talking about the bullets under suggested data and documentation?
Yeah. No, 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 no.
No.
We're looking at domain A.
But I mean, where are the bullet points you want? Where do you want to put them on ours, or how you?
Sure.
Okay.
The indicators.
Are we working on indicators?
Yes.
Just this part?
So. If these are your indicators, these are the bullet points. So.
So they're reflected under?
No, no, no.
This?
No. They're under here. So these, these indicators, collaboratively develops and implements a shared vision and mission, would correlate to, say, standard A3 on this document, and it would just, it would just expand what we are going, and just these bullet points under here. So you still have 1.1, and then 1.2 would have, you know, the indicators, the bullet points would be the feedback, implements and plans, achievement goals. Here's effective resources. And then more bullet points. It's just explaining what we're looking for in those indicators.
Mm-hmm.
That's all. It's just, it's just, it's giving more substance to what we're looking for. Because we may not be, when we're not here any longer, these people coming behind us need that.
Yeah, I agree. I just don't know how we can.
Well, it's, it's a daunting document, but it, it's necessary.
Mm-hmm.
And I, you know, I'm going to apologize that all these years, we have never done a valid student, uh, superintendent evaluation in all these years. So now we're doing it, and it just takes time.
So what we could do is, if, if, and you'd need more time, I get it. But what you might be interested in doing is looking at some of these indicators, deciding if there are any that you like that are just as they are written. And then if there are ones that you want to include that are in our draft, or if there are others that you want to make sure. Once you decide, you can circle, you can, you know, all of that kind of thing. We can get somebody to, um, you know, get it.
Together.
Mm-hmm. Get it put together. So that's not a burden on you, because that is, that's just way too much. So if, if we have the notes on what it is that we want to include, then we'll get it organized and typed out.
Okay. Very about that now.
No, no, no. But, again, this shit has empirical data behind it.
Agreed.
On these indicators. And I, I love this, I, I'm.
So the best way to work through this is to do one point, like, go 1.1, and then pick things out that apply, that maybe are not.
And then just right next to them, where they would go, and say here.
Yeah, like, this goes with 1.1.
And then, and then it's a matter of copy and paste at that point.
Exactly. Exactly. So, first of all, are there indicators that we already have on the draft that we're looking at, Captain Kelly gave to us, that we want to keep?
Under performance standard number one?
Yes, so those performance indicators.
Mm-hmm.
At the bottom of the page.
Were there any that you all had admitted? I actually added one.
What was that?
Well, I added one, um, which was plagiarizing off of your goals. The embracing philosophy that leadership practices be guided through the lens of equity, and the strong belief that all of our students can achieve at high levels.
Mm-hmm.
To me, that's visionary leadership.
That would be a shared vision and mission, wouldn't it? That would be under 1.1?
Yep.
It would.
So I was going to say the same.
I put it right under that.
I was going to say.
Emphasize that.
I was going to say, your 1.1, the 1.1 that's on this document is, is a good one. The only language I would propose that we think about is, every superintendent doesn't need to develop a brand-new vision.
And my question was there, I guess.
So, but AASA gives us some language and says, provides leadership in the development of a shared vision, but it also talks about, uh, managing. Let me go back to where I saw that.
Strategic plan to attain that vision. It's in this first paragraph. I think that's what you're talking about.
Mm-hmm. But it wasn't, it was, it was, it broke it out so that you're not always, um, developing, but you could, you know, you could provide leadership in implementing, um, in monitoring, and those kinds of things, because you're not always going to be developing a new vision.
Right. And we do have that, that's where we have it. I had a question here, online, was to take out the word develop, and it just says collaboratively implements a shared vision and mission.
Okay.
Yeah, I agree with you on that. I, that was the first thing I wrote down.
So, should we highlight it and then put the number next to it? Is that what you want to do? Is that how, in order?
Sure, how we want, we just, we need to change that.
Well, what I was just doing was, I was thinking, I'm just going to put a check next to our 1.1. I crossed out the wo- the two words develops and, so that it reads collaboratively implements a shared vision and mission.
Right.
And, you know, we could, we could do more to that if you want, um, but we'll still have to talk about the evidence of that when we start looking at that rubric on the next page. But, you know, it's my opinion that that's appropriate, definitely, to have in this evaluation tool.
If I take this document and highlight it, and then put bullet point one, 1.1.
Sure.
That way, this document can be used to.
Mm-hmm. I think we're, but I think we're good with the wording on 1.1.
Yeah.
And then cross off the first dot, so we don't need to add that in.
Okay.
Is what she's saying, because it says the same thing, right? Shared vision.
Okay.
Provide leadership.
You don't need to have a bullet point on that?
No.
Okay.
That first bullet, under performance indicator, under standard A2, you're saying, right?
Yes, I still think.
Is to cross that one off, because we don't need a strategic plan to attain the vision. We already have that.
Well, it's here, maintain stakeholders' focus on long-range mission and goals throughout the implementation process.
Where's that one? A3?
No, it's A2. It's the last one, under A2.
Okay, so I'm going to highlight this. And then put 1.1. That way, it will be a bullet point for that particular.
Okay.
See what I mean?
Mm-hmm.
That way, we have a dot, we have something for them to.
Cross-reference.
Yes. Okay.
Okay, so I see. I'm starting to get the hang of it. 1.1 is, stays where it is written in on our form, and then that will go underneath it.
Right.
Okay. All right, I see what you mean. Are there any other bullet points that need to go under that, that are not included? Or is that where we show it into the box of effective or highly effective?
I, I think the one up at the top of those, that second column there, works collaboratively to develop long and short-range goals and objectives consistent with the strategic plan, and monitors progress in achieving long and short-range goals and objectives. Because while the vision is not the same as the strategic plan, it certainly is absorbed within the strategic plan. Um, and so this does mention the strategic plan, and allows for some data points for goals, and monitoring progress toward those goals.
Well, can we agree that visionary leadership needs to be changed? Standard one needs to be visionary leadership in planning and assessment?
I mean. I just don't know if the word assessment, assessment indicates.
I thought just visionary leadership and planning.
Yeah, I think that might be better, because assessment confuses you and moves you into the instructional part of.
Okay.
You know, a test, or what, what shows.
Visionary leadership and planning. Okay.
But if you're looking at this, what you're saying, isn't that included in these, some of these?
Yeah, it, it, it sure is. Um, so 1.2 collects and uses data to identify goals, assess organizational effectiveness, and promote organizational learning. That, that certainly is some of that, and that one that I mentioned up at the top. So we could just leave it.
I'm seeing, because I put down, we, you know, like, your presentation's by Dave Brown, basically.
Right.
So you want that to be 1.2?
So, so leave the 1.2 as it is on the draft, then? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, I mean, if that's okay. I'm just kind of looking through what we're, we need to.
The 1.2 gets nothing added to it.
Correct.
Okay.
Because I think that covers that.
Mm-hmm.
Next one, provide feedback to principals on goal achievement.
Plans and implements changes in programs and curricula based on da- data. Uh, A1, bullet point, or fifth one down.
Say again, Tammy?
I'm just, I'm looking at bullet points to put under here, creates, implements, plans to achieve goals. So plans and implements is changes in programs based on, on data.
Right.
And then.
We've got collection uses data to identify goals, assess, the 1.2, so you're looking at a bullet point to put underneath there?
Yes.
Right, of how you do that.
I'm just looking at here to see if there's anything.
Maybe that part about, um, feedback to principals on goal achievement and needs for improvement?
Or the, or even the last one in that.
1.5.
So 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, the seventh, um, indicator under A1, develops, monitors, and assesses district and school improvement plans.
Yes, okay. And that would be under 1.3?
Mm-hmm.
So it's something you specifically do when you get the information on the data?
Correct. But as, but also, when we do our superintendent monitoring visits, we are monitoring data and school improvement, um, progress.
Yes, you're right.
Implement strategies for the inclusion of staff and various stakeholders in the planning process. Would that be under 1.1? Under A2, the second bullet point down? Strategies for the inclusion of staff and various stakeholders in the planning process.
Are you, you said, would that be equivalent to which one?
1.1.
Collaboratively?
Sure.
There'd be another 1.1.
Yeah.
Okay, so you're highlighting, putting 1.1.
Yes.
All right, I got it. Thank you.
I'm just.
Yeah. Supports distribution by identifying active and potential educational stakeholders. I mean, all this is good stuff here. Both continuous and sustain- and sustainable improvement, so that would be the one, provides feedback to principals, would be 1.4. Are you in, under A2, second column, provides feedback to principals on goal achievement needs for improvement?
What are you putting that under, 1.2?
Uh, under 1.4, as part of feedback, continuous and sustainable improvement.
Yeah, and I think it's, number 1.3 is repetitious, so I would say we delete that on our draft. Creating and implementing plans to achieve goals. I mean, that's what this is all about.
It's already in the 1.2?
Yeah.
I agree with that.
Okay, so, cross off 1.3, our, the draft, 1.3.
Okay.
So now we're moved to 1.4.
Continue sustainable improvement, there's that second column, all of, all of those.
Feedback to principals.
And supports staff through changes of process.
Changes, and the stages of change process.
Yes. Sustainable development.
I'm sorry, can you give me that one again?
Provides feedback to principals on, at the second column, under A2.
Okay, yeah. But that was for 1.4, right?
1.4. And then supports staff through changes of change process. Supports staff through the changes, to the stages of change process.
Mm-hmm.
That would be a sustainable.
Sustainable improvement, yes.
Improvement.
So hold the visa, 1.4.
Facilitates programs, curricular changes to meet state and federal regulations.
It might be under something else, let me see.
So that probably is instructional leadership. Okay, 1.1, um, for a whole other standard, for standard, um, 5 for us.
Okay, which one was that again?
Standard 5 is leadership and curriculum instruction and assessment.
Okay. Oversees the planning, implementation, implementation, valuation, and revision, so that would be 5.1.
I'll put a note for standard 5.
5.1. 5.1. Stands to focus on teaching and learning, oversee the planning.
You moved down to standard 5 there?
Yeah, I'm just trying to find a, because I like that as a bullet point, but I think it's, I think our standards are a little too, you keep saying the word designs through here, and I think.
We aren't starting from scratch.
Exactly. I think sustain, sustainability here is, that I can't find a, a standard to correlate it with. Under instructional leadership, maybe?
Oh, okay, I see what you mean. Let me see.
Superintendent oversees the alignment, coordination, and delivery of assigned programs. We could take that and incorporate it into, instead of design. But let's, yeah, we'll get to that.
Mm-hmm. I just made a note for standard 5.
Okay, I'm going to put it under here.
So, we're, we're good with the 1.1, we are good with 1.2, we crossed out 1.3, we have some ideas for 1.4 to enhance that one. And so for 1.5, monitors and evaluates progress and revises plans. That sort of.
Reviews annual analysis of districts' tests and sub-scores.
Yeah.
That would be.
Monitors and evaluates.
Evaluating. Plans and implements, implements changes in prog- I'm all under A1.
Yeah, uh, yeah, plans and implements changes in programs or curricula based on data.
Reviews annual analysis.
Maybe that needs to come out, then, because 1.5, isn't that in there about implementing? I mean, collection uses data to identify goals, and it's all covered under 1.2.
So all those could be 1.2, we could just get rid of 1.5?
I'm wondering, because it looks repetitious to me, monitoring, evaluating the progress, and revising plans.
And promote organization, comma, and monitor, evaluates, progress.
Oh, okay, so that is.
Add that on to this.
Yeah.
Add 1.5 to 1.2.
Yeah.
And then I'm going to take these.
Okay.
These bullet points and add it to it.
Yeah, because we could just have two, two sentences in there, that's fine.
Okay, that's fine.
So 1.5, we're going to add to 1.2?
Yes, just, just say collection uses, the first sentence they have for 1.2, and then add in the next sentence, monitors and evaluates progress and revises plans. And then, before we go away from that, I really think we ought to have some kind of a note in there for visionary leadership on the philosophy we're pushing for. And I'd like to do that, like, forever, under the equity lens.
Oh, yeah, we need to go back to that one.
You don't have that reflected in this at all.
Right.
Evaluation.
Right.
So, to me, that's your visionary leadership.
That's the case, all this here is 1.2.
Yes, just, just say collection uses, the first sentence they have for 1.2, and then add in the next sentence, monitors and evaluates progress and revises plans. And then, before we go away from that, I really think we ought to have some kind of a note in there for visionary leadership on the philosophy we're pushing for. And I like to do that like forever, under the equity lens.
Oh, yeah, we need to go back to that one.
Reflected endless at all.
Right.
Evaluation.
Right.
So, I mean, that's your visionary leader.
That's the case, all this here is 1.2. All these bullet points in A1 would go under 1.2, all the way down, until the last one.
Except for the 1.4s.
Correct.
Yeah.
Because this all talks about debt, data, it all talks about.
Continuous and sustainable improvement.
Yes.
Well, maybe the description of that indicator should be 1.1 sentence, then 1.5 sentence, and then 1.4 sentence. Promoting continuous and sustainable improvement, and they all kind of go together in one.
Now, 1.4 is definitely different. By, by bonding 1.2 and 1.5.
Okay.
There's definitely a difference in 1.4, so 1.4 would actually become 1.3. Now, this, one indicator, standard A4, about effective allocation of fiscal and other resources, where would that fall under?
The organizational leadership.
Which one are you looking at?
Yeah, I'm on, I'm on planning assessments still, but theirs, their performance standard talks about effective allocation of fiscal and other resources.
Yes.
I don't, I don't know where that would be in here.
Yeah, it's organizational leadership standard 4.
Standard 4, okay. And then, and then take all these bullet points and put under standard 4, is that what you're?
Well, we can, we can come back, because some of them may already be subsumed in what we already have, but note that this is something that we want to.
All right, let me.
Yeah, 4.3 makes sound, fiscal decisions align with strategic goals.
Okay, so standard. I want, just try to identify it before we move on.
Absolutely.
Because it made sense.
So, for the one that you want to add, so this will now be a 1.5, because the current 1.5, we put up to 1.2.
Right, and we have a 1.3.
Yes.
So this would be a 1.4.
Oh, actually, you're right, yep, you're right.
What are you talking about 1.4, what is that?
I would, I would like to put something in like what she had in her goals, embracing the philosophy that leadership practices be guided through the lens of equity, and a strong belief that all of our students can achieve at high levels.
So, that can be found in the goals document.
Right.
It is, if you go to the back of the second page, under B.
How does that pertains to a standard, and how would we measure that?
So, some examples of evidence that I put, I listed were through our equal opportunity schools plans. The one that we're doing to identify students not traditionally in advanced level courses. I put down our diversity professional development, recruiting and hiring for diverse candidates, school activities and events. Discipline data, because that's frequently an area that has a significant disparity. My participation in community events, those are the kinds of things. Meeting and agendas, minutes, because I include that conversation about diversity and equity in all of our AMS meetings. So.
Guiding where we are looking.
The back of the second page, you've got, go one more page, at the top.
The top, that's here. So the bullet points would be the emphasis on plan to strengthen inclusive practices.
Right.
That would be a bullet point.
So, if you, the last sentence in my description for that goal was evidence of equitable practices will be demonstrated in academic programs, human resources, student support programs, professional development, and discipline, to be specific.
So 1.4 is embrace.
Embrace philosophy that leadership practices be guided through the lens of equity.
Okay, so if you know all that, can you just incorporate it? And then, the bullet points being also what's in this?
I think the bullet point under that would be that evidence, right?
Is that what you're thinking? It would have one here, bullet points would be plans to strengthen inclusive practices, bullet point expand access and opportunity, bullet point improve teaching and learning in order for students to achieve, I mean, bullet point, and then the evidence would be listed under evidence. We're going to include that.
So, these, good point, I'm glad you broke it out like that, could be in the descriptors for the ratings categories. So, to what degree, right, that's what you're saying.
Correct. And make them bullet points of the visionary, embracing the philosophy of equity.
Right.
Isn't that now something that, are they putting that in COMAR?
So, they changed it from education that's multicultural to educational equity.
Okay, that's what I thought.
Yeah, we did our training from May last week.
With that.
Yep.
And then development of a policy is gonna, is a requirement for COMAR.
What about policy?
We, we're already there.
We're already there.
Already there.
Close.
Yeah, and I've already written up a bullet.
Get your quota.
Not making a lot of, it had to be done.
Yeah.
I, I did get a bullet for the evaluation.
Followed.
No, no.
I mean, I added some bullets, sorry.
Okay. On that one, we'll get to it.
So put under.
All that is 1.5.
Like I said, that's one thing you're, you already have been doing, so.
Okay.
Something that you've already been doing. This is good, starting fresh for you, hopefully.
No, it's not.
Too hard.
Bullet points.
So, what are we down to on the?
I'm good with standard 1, if everybody's.
And so what we need to do is, we need to come back through this, the rubric.
Right, what makes effective.
And, we could align that, so I've been making some notes for, for some of the indicators that are on the ASA document, that we initially may have said, yes, include that, but then we said, don't, because it probably has some language in it that we want to include in the rubric. And also, what you just said from the goals document, we can include that in the rubric. And so we can just scale it back, we can start at highly effective, we put all those things that we want to see, and then we could just start to scale it back. And, just to save time, we can work on that, we'll present it to the board, you decide if those, if what we've done captures everything that you want, or I can leave it to you, however you want to do it.
Well, I do want to, I, when I'm developed this, I'm mostly looking at highly effective, because I think that's what.
That's exactly what I'm saying.
Superintendent will be looking at.
Yep, start with highly effective, put all the things in that that you want to see, and then scale back as you go from effective to needs improvement to ineffective.
Something I don't, I, I've kind of, under the standards we have here, effective, ineffective, needs improvement, effective, highly effective. Down at the bottom, highly effective, the vision is lively and evident in the culture, I would, I, I just don't like the word.
Yeah, I don't think you want to see this.
No.
I think what you want to see here is reflective of the changes that we just made.
Yes.
So, what I'm suggesting is that we look, so say, for example, what's our first indicator? Our first indicator is collaboratively implements a shared vision and mission, and so I go back to that one. And so, I can say, you know, is includes, includes staff and various stakeholders in the planning process for, you know, strategic plan or vision, mission, or priorities for the district, that kind of thing. That might be one that we put in here. Another that we might put in here is that the superintendent has emphasized plans to strengthen inclusive practices, expand access and opportunity, and improve teaching and learning in all QA CPS efforts, or something to that nature.
Are you looking at that because?
That was the one that came from the goals, the one that you wanted.
Because this whole, this to me is, and I wrote the word block.
So.
So, I would rather have something that's, and, and when, and when it's, when we say it's highly effective, meets the standard, meets.
Right, so my suggestion is that we not use that.
Yeah.
That we not use these, and we put in new ones that are related to the indicators that we just identified.
I agree with that.
Right, so we do have one in there for vision, you know, so, but, but, do you understand what I'm saying? Does that make sense?
Yeah, Captain Kelly.
So, what I was trying to do to save time is say, some of these indicators from the ASA that we initially started talking about was important, but then we sort of cross it off to keep the language, you know, concise here. That's where some of these can fit on to the categories, so that we can say, okay, you're highly effective if you.
Have demonstrated these.
Yes, yes. And so what my suggestion was, and, and I can leave this to the board, or I can have my team to work on it, do, just to do some cut and paste. You can share with me if there are any in particular that you want to be sure that are included here at the outset. And then, we can type it up, and we can let you take a look at it and see if that meets, you know, what you're trying to get to.
The only one that I didn't like was one at the bottom about the vision is lively, I mean, I would rather it say, you know, repeated efforts, or, you know, repeated, demonstrates, you know, continually demonstrates the, you know, the system and the vision. Somewhere in there that, you know, that you're articulating that to us, this vision is lively, that, that to me is just, yeah, I would take that out. But everything else, articulates a clear and coherent vision, exhibits the disposition of a learner, leadership actions, staff and resources are clearly aligned with that. I mean, that's, it's, I mean, those, those seem to me like it's tangible, yes, I can see that you do this, and I can, and it can be demonstrated in, you know, your.
Those three are, make sense.
Yeah, the last one just didn't to me.
I wanted to add one in there that, that supports what we just added on embracing the equity thing, too.
Yes.
I wrote down establishes programs and training.
And I think that is in.
Students and staff.
For.
To understand.
That's what I was saying, add that one.
Right.
Here, it's showing evidence of.
Right.
And that's right there, so that's perfect.
And that goes, so that part of your goal will just.
And so, may I suggest just one other thing? So, because we changed some of this, and some of the standard now incorporates using data, monitoring, and ensuring that we have continuous improvement in our district, we just need to be sure that that matches.
Yes.
This highly effective category, so we want to include those things in that. That's, that's what I was mentioning when I'm saying, change some of these to match what we just said was important for standard 1.
Okay.
Okay, to match the standard.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, all right, great.
So, to, you know, for example, exhibits the disposition of a learner, practices and applies new learning to further the mission, is not a part of what we just said. So, I would say that that one probably should go, and we probably need to replace that, or certainly include that with something that's related to using data, monitoring that data, showing continuous improvement. And what I was suggesting is that I can pull language from the indicators from the ASA document to include in the ratings category. Because then, there, that language is certainly measurable, you can, you can measure that. And you can say whether I've done it or not.
Under, so under suggested data and documentation, an extra bullet.
Are we clear, are we clear up there?
Oh, I, yeah, I, I totally agree. In order to add to the lens of equity.
Yeah.
For documentation, you know, we'd have to add something down here for suggested data.
Yeah, right, I think I put down the, what was on her goals, which is the equal opportunity schools. And we could say, you know, what initiatives have you taken?
Okay, discipline data, so all this examples of evidence could be.
We have down.
Could be for standards 1.4, those 1.4 evidence. Okay. See, I just, I'm just making a note that this is evidence for 1.4.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
In this document.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. No, I like that. I thought that I should like it, it just sounds.
Measurable. It sounds closer to what Tammy's concern was.
Right, memorable.
Whole tool wasn't measurable enough, so, so she accommodated.
It was a great start.
My desire not to completely throw it out, because I didn't want to start over fresh.
Not at all. It just needed to be.
To expand it for more tools, yeah.
And not be so subjective, sorry, keep pounding on that, just my fault. We ready to go on, standard 2?
Yep, policy and govern, governance, so that goes back to, there is one, it's in, in the, to the others, the first one.
It's the ASA. Now, Mr. P, you certainly feel free to jump in here.
Okay. Because you're organizational.
Did you say ASA, St. Paul?
I, I can't remember specifically, but it is the Superintendent's Association.
Superintendent, okay, like a national.
Yep, yep, it is national.
National one, okay.
So, I, I understand, okay, performance standard 2. Understands or articulates the system of public service governance, differentiates between policymaking and administrative goals. The second one, 2.2, establishes procedures for superintendent working in interpersonal and working relationships. The superintendent doesn't necessarily establish the procedures, because that's done in each of the different departments. Gone to what we just went through, we just went through policy procedures, that's done in the policy committee. But I would say implements, proceeds the procedures.
Are you, are you at 2.2?
2.2, yes.
Establishes procedures for superintendent slash board interpersonal and working relationships.
2 needs to be there.
Right, I, I think that it doesn't have anything to do with policies, I think that that is established in the school board handbook.
Administrative.
Mm-hmm.
I think that can go.
So then, since that's already all been done.
I think it's incorporated in 2.1, that you understand or articulate to the system, the policy, actually, I think that should be expanded because.
Well, basically, that, that whole description is the jobs between who does what, the board or supervisor, or superintendent.
And 2.4, I think, needs to go away as well, because that's a part of the policymaking and administrative decision.
Which one?
Not 2.4.
Legal counsel?
Yeah, I mean, that, that's a part of the process.
Yeah, I put a question mark there, like I don't understand what's.
So can we just ditch 2.4?
Yeah, so you got rid of 2 and 4, right?
And just expand on 2.1 and the new 2.2 to incorporate.
Just be sure we have, we covered what's in the.
Exactly.
Say, let's look at that then.
Yeah. Quite honestly, could we just, could we just take this and adopt this as our performance indicators for this particular? Because this covers everything. Honestly. It expands each one of the 2.1 and 2.2 into categories that are measurable. Is that allowed? Is that plagiarism?
Um, yep.
Yes on what, yep on what? Yep on both.
Yeah, yeah, we, yeah, we need to, you know, make the language our own.
Okay.
Um, by all means, so, I mean.
Can't pay them to let us?
Well, I don't think we have to, we're members, I'm a member, so they certainly put this out here for my use. But what, but I would, you know, change some of the language.
Okay.
So that it, you know, really meets ours, and then we have to talk about how do we want to identify that? Do we want to include, I'm be clear on what you're asking, some of these indicators to build the ratings categories? Or do you want these indicators to actually be our performance indicators?
Okay, so let me give my overview on this. Definitely under G1, the third bullet point down, develops administrative regulations that support, that's got to come out.
Well, no, that would be, that is what I'm responsible for, you do policies, I do regulations.
That's true, okay.
Well, basically, you're talking about like the first bullet, under G1, the first bullet down under indicator, would fall under like understanding and interpret the roles.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, what, 2.2?
2.2?
Yeah, because that is understanding, interpreting the roles of state policies and politics and districts.
So, are you saying to use, are you, are you saying to use or? So are you saying to use, are you, are you saying to use or that bullet?
Yeah, under, under 2.2.
So.
I'm sorry, I didn't.
This now becomes 2.2.
Um, use this one for the ratings categories?
Yeah, yes.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, yeah.
Because the, the 2.1 that you have here really, it captures it, but this is one way to demonstrate it.
Right.
So which, which indicator you talking about?
So we're talking about under G1, the very first bullet, supports and enforces all school board policies and informs all constituents of changes to school board policies. That would be a way to demonstrate our 2.1 understands and articulates the system of public school governments and differentiates between policymaking and administrative roles. I guess that's one way.
So G1, the first and second bullet points, is that what you're talking about?
I didn't look at the second one. Let me see, recommends changes to the school board with school board policies conflict with, yeah, that would certainly. Articulating and differentiates between policies.
I don't know, I don't really like that one, the second one.
Yeah, I didn't either.
School board policies conflict with the school board's vision.
That would already be a part of it.
We're so early in development of policies that.
Well, that's not even the point. Policies are already there.
That's what I mean, the policies should not be conflicting. You wouldn't be developing.
Part of the policymaking process, especially when co-mar gets changed, we need to know that. So it's, it's, it's fluid. It's a fluid action of going over the policy.
But we're not, not, don't have changes because we don't have.
Supports and enforces all school board policies and informs constituents and changes to the school board, to the policies. That's 2.2 right off the bat.
What I'm saying is the second bullet under performance.
I know what you meant.
Yeah, I don't think we need that. Because why would, why would you recommend changes to us if a policy conflicts with our vision of education? I mean, you don't, you don't even initially create the policy if it conflicts.
So what I interpret this to mean is if we have a policy on the books, let's just take the educational equity policy, right? And so we believe, you know, that we want to give all students opportunities to be, you know, global learners and all those things that our vision says, that's our board's vision. But now the state has come up with some new language to change the policy that we had in place about equity, right? And so since the state made a change, we then have to make a change. And it's my responsibility to inform you that now there's a change that is going to conflict with what we believe, right? Because now is the law.
Right.
So that would be a change that I'd need to communicate with you.
And we would have to change.
To cause us to change our policy, exactly.
Okay, but we'd have to change the policy because of state law.
So it's going to conflict with our vision for education.
But that's a part of that process.
Simply because, if, if for no other reason because we believe that we are supposed to be in compliance with state and federal laws.
Okay, okay, right.
So here's, here's a question. Under G3, the administration of school day-to-day operations, would that fall under policy and government, governance? And will we make a new bullet point to incorporate that?
Well. On the governance side, probably.
Yes. I, I call it administration, but they call it governance, right? So would we make that 2.3 and make that? And then all these.
We may have included that in here.
Do we include that somewhere else?
That's what I was checking.
You're looking at organizational effect.
Organ, organization, organizational leadership, would that be included in standard four?
Let's see what we have.
Cause they have it here under policy and governance.
Hmm. Sort of, it's covered sort of. It doesn't talk about the organization.
Reword 4.1 encompass it. Put it there. That's monitors and evaluates the management of operational systems. So you just reword it to day-to-day operations.
Okay, and then put it under four?
Or is that four?
4.1, management of operational systems, just change it to management of day-to-day operations.
Yeah, it was.
So change this to.
It's organizational leadership, like we said, yeah, very, first one.
So you want to make 4.1.
I lost it now.
Honors evaluates the day-to-day operations?
Which one is it? Help me again. Which is it under G3?
G3, it's the.
Oh, the first standard, okay, all right. Okay, so make this 4.1.
This, we should, we're all done with that, you got that? The one we were just working on before, under, yeah. Let's think.
Planning and government.
Yeah, where we, I just, I don't like this.
This one.
Conflicting with the school board's vision for education.
It just don't.
When you described to me, it's just conflicting with current school board, um, we're going to documentations.
So recommends changes to the school board when school board policies.
Conflict with, um, I don't know, higher, higher, you know, you're talking about the state coming up with something different. Does it, nothing will conflict with our vision for education. I don't really understand that. But how you described it means when changes occur or.
Right.
When changes are required from, um.
I like that, because it leaves it open. Because sometimes it's a state thing and, and sometimes it may not be. So develop, it could be because we are changing our procedure for the way we do something.
Okay.
So recommends change it to the school board when school board policies, um, require changes.
Are we back on policy and governance?
Yes, yeah, something like that. It doesn't have anything to do with vision of our education.
So I won't say conflict.
So are we, are we adding anything from this?
So for that second, so G1, the second bullet that we had been talking about before, uh, recommends changes to the school board when school board policies require revision. So.
That's it, yeah.
When school board policies require wire revision.
Thank you.
And where, where are you putting that under?
We already had that going under.
2.1?
We had it going under, go back, 2.1. What was it? What was it? 2.2, understanding, interpret the roles.
Okay.
Relationship. We may have actually created a new 2.3.
Kane, I have this, I guess, so.
Okay, keep doing yours.
Okay.
Cause I'm making little notes for myself to remember for certain things. So.
I'm just, I'm making it clean.
That'd be awesome.
Where did we put that?
We had said that we were, and we said that we were going to include that language in the rubric.
Oh, we're going to put it in the rubric, yeah.
So this is going to go in the, in the rubric rather than as a bullet point?
Right, and it would support 2.2.
Right, okay, support 2, okay, got it. Cause I think one of the keys to this thing is the roles and responsibilities of the superintendent as opposed to the board. And that's, that's key to success in our school system, one of the keys. All right, thank you. So what have we covered under?
So I think what we did was we sort of got off and we found one that we wanted to put under standard four. So now we can go back then to standard two. Are there any other performance indicator of the bullets that you want to be sure we include in the ratings category for the rubric for standard two, policy and governance?
Some of the suggested data documentation down here needs some work, only because I, I don't see how it correlates with. I mean, it's evidenced at meetings, evidenced through, you know, communication to the staff, evidenced through communication to the parents. You know what I mean? So it's tangible. Demonstrates tact with offering recommendations.
Just that.
That's a part of the job.
Yeah. Even responds directly and factually to the school board. It sounds like an ethics thing.
Those are soft skills.
They are, definitely. They're hard skills when your butt, your tongue like this.
Yeah, because those go into wishing nice to me.
That would under, that would go under professional ethic leadership and professionalism.
Yeah, both of those would.
Okay.
If we want that included.
All right.
You think about that one.
Standard seven, was it?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
So, part about involving the staff as necessary when planning and demonstrating professional personal skills which facilitates staff involvement. I don't know if that's policy and governance as much as it's.
Professionalism.
Leadership.
Yeah.
It's a leadership section on that.
Ethical leadership and professionalism. So be stuck under there.
I think that's organizational leadership.
Which one are you having in?
Okay.
G4?
G2.
Okay, cause G4, there's a lot of that and our standard four as well.
Okay.
Standard four.
So, so which one?
I'm seeing this one here, G2, responding, not that one, I'm sorry, I was looking at, I'm sorry, I got my.
Involve staff.
The beginning and first and second bullets, talk about involving the staff, one and two, those two bullets.
Uh-huh, okay.
They fit better under organizational leadership. I mean, it should, I didn't read that yet. Managing the day-to-day ops, wait a minute, that's not the one. It's a type of leadership. Maybe it's leadership and curriculum.
Uh, 4.1, as far as monitoring and evaluating management of day-to-day operations or including the staff.
Maybe that fits. Is there, I don't know anything in here about managing the people.
Well, that could.
Maybe it's.
It kind of goes in with 5.6, promotes the effective and appropriate technologies and educational program and support teaching and learning. You need their input to do that.
Where's this at?
This G2, involves staff as necessary in planning, providing recommendations to the school boards.
Okay. It would fit under a couple of them.
Yeah.
It under, also fits under 4.5. Ensuring that non-instructional staff are focused on their role to support quality instruction and student learning. And that could be one of the highly effective things too. Looking at these two.
Demonstrates the professional skills would definitely be under. It would be something tangible to measure.
Yeah. I would think under organizational leadership, performance standard four.
Okay.
We have a description down there under 4.5 about ensuring, this is, this is focused, I think, on the central office.
So that's the second bullet point here?
Under.
Demonstrates professional, professional, personal skills.
That would be probably in the block for what makes you highly effective.
In the block?
In the block, yeah.
So the second bullet demonstrates professional, personal skills, put that in the rubric?
A rubric, okay.
For, for, performance standard four, which is organizational leadership.
Okay. Uh, I, I also, I recommended 4.4 proposes under, s, s, performance standard G4, proposes improvements to school facilities which increase public confidence and trust that schools are safe and effective learning environments. Under 4.4?
Exactly.
Okay.
Exactly, but 4.4.
Okay, so I, I. Uses technology to.
Said that, um, where's that? Tammy, which one you just read?
Okay, G4, on the second bullet point down, proposes improvements under 4.4. Protecting the wealth and welfare and safety of students and staff.
That would also fit under one of those rubrics. We're talking about this one here, under four.
Would just be a bullet point two?
This one here.
The second one, make it.
Going under four.
In the rubric. Or 4.4.
Four, yeah, I think she.
Put it in the rubric?
So proposes improvements to school facilities which increase public confidence and trust that schools are safe.
That sounds like a rubric thing.
Okay.
Is that to you too? Yeah, so that would be.
So standard four rubric.
Yeah, right.
So where you said 4.4, did, do you want me to scratch that?
No, I'll just put it in the rubric.
Yeah, just in the rubric. It supports 4.4.
Yes, so that's what we're trying to say. So going back to policy governance, are we, are we clear with that one? Is that good?
Just taking a look at.
One talks about tech, ensure safe, secure schools for all students and employees. That's in somewhere, I'm not sure.
Well, that would be, that would actually be in the rubric rather than.
Right.
A bullet point. How do you demonstrate that you ensure that?
Just by her, the drills that she does. And that would be under data, um, the suggested data documentation. They do regular drills. That's where I say lessons learned. I wasn't sure of your question on that.
It, it was mentioned.
Yeah, I'm, I'm.
It was actually mentioned in one of these. It was like, I haven't seen one, so I'd need to see it.
Sure, safe in schools, that would be under day-to-day operations, 4.1.
Actually, this one had it somewhere unusual.
Or under 4.4.
Yeah, it's under four, it's under four.
Safety of students.
Okay.
I, I haven't seen that either. And I'm, I guess there's a question for Sid too. When we have these drills.
Okay, wait a minute, that is not, we're, that's stay focused, not a part of what we're doing. Talk to him about that later.
It is part of it because it's one of the, it's one of the standards here.
But we're talking about the superintendent. That's, she's talking about a system-wide.
I mean, it's system-wide when they have the drills, that they create lessons learned, which is, which is what I had, was trying to put into one of these documentations, lessons learned, so that next time you do it, it's better, you know, you incorporate.
Does the superintendent communicate the data retrieved from fire drills to make changes in, in current regulations or current procedures?
Make changes.
So, is that how you'd say it?
Because we report all that to the state, it, ours is sound, what we do, and we report what we do. So we, I don't need to make any changes. Our plans are, are fine with the state, um, a hundred percent. And so.
Implement changes based on data.
I, I think maybe what we're getting at here is when we have in a, a, a situation, we have a bomb threat at a school, what have we learned from that?
Correct.
That, that's, that's what you're getting at.
Yeah, we call it a hot wash. You all call it a.
I call it a lesson.
Lessons learned.
Right, and so what's the intent? Help me understand the intent. What are you, what are you asking?
Are we doing that in support of keeping the school safe?
Well, absolutely, there's conversation. It has, it is currently not necessarily documented unless we're with, um, you know, law enforcement, that something needed to be changed in our processes, but our processes are sound, so, you know.
Okay.
What it says here is ensures all schools have through thorough current crisis management plans that are exercised on a routine basis.
Yep.
Incorporating lessons learned at the end of drill. So for me to assess that, I would actually have to see the lessons learned in the plan.
Great, which is that, is that available to us?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely.
And if I can just jump into that, one of the things you're going to see in the new proposed indicators, there's a whole indicator on school safety and security, and there's a whole sub-indica, or goal rather, and there's an indicator that. And there's an indicator that will say a hundred percent of plans that are complete. There's a piece in there about improvement to safe and security. So there's seven or eight different indicators that you're now going to see that we'll report on annually.
Okay.
So I think that will fit to.
That will fit.
Answering your question on evidence.
Right.
Does the superintendent and staffs?
Because part of this plan would include, you have to have so many drills per year, you have to do this.
Which we're required to by.
Is that being monitored?
Mm-hmm.
Yep. I was just looking, I was perusing another document to see if there's anything we're missing with this policy and.
So, Mrs. Morissette, just to, just to reiterate, I'll give you some examples, you know, a hundred percent of our, this will be an indicator, a hundred percent of our schools and offices and complex have emergency plans that are complete. A hundred percent of those schools meeting sister requirements for emergency plans and drills. Number of, a percent of employee unit groups train and active assailant. So those will give you some ideas of some indicators that we'll report. We're already doing that anyways, we just haven't formally put it in an indicator.
Okay.
Well, the other place we had security was under community relations, I thought that was interesting.
That's our next one. Can we move on to that?
Oh, yeah.
Standard.
Everybody good with?
Like to try and.
Two, everyone's good with two then? Our standard, our standard two?
Okay.
Okay, so we'll move to performance standard three, comms and community relations. And that one is. That is same thing, domain C. On this other one. I can get these letters from, just wondering.
Um, this, this is a part of a lot, much larger document that I will share with you by a, a link. I know, but it was a lot, so it was like forty-four pages, so.
Just wondering.
If you had the whole document, you could see the context.
Okay, alright.
And it would also have explained how they come up with each group C one, C two, C threes of those standards.
Okay. Okay, so C one. Trust and teamwork.
That we just did in the policy committee, it's changing the word oral to verbal. And I see in here that it uses acceptable written and verbal language. I, I would like to make it uniform across here, anytime that we see the word oral, that we put verbal. As a more acceptable use of the word.
Yeah. So we've got, we've got verbal here. If we should come on something that says oral, we'll make that change.
I, I like in, in the performance standard C three, down here in the bullet points. Promotes multicultural awareness, gender sensitivity and appreciation of diversity in the community. But how would you be able to? Evidence that? Knowledgeable about the laws regarding individual group rights. Again, how do we?
Yeah, so, so, yeah, okay, thank you. So that, that absolutely is part of, and part of that is tied into our equity work. But this being knowledgeable about the laws regarding individual group rights, that, it's Title IX. Those are things that we do have in policy and we have procedures that require.
Would that correlate to community, community relations? Or would that be under ethical leadership?
Well, I understand why they have it here because I think that their focus is on group rights and responsibilities as it relates to community relations.
Okay.
Um, so I get why they have it here. And, and I would say in this context, it's appropriate. Because if you start, if you look up at that standard C three, it talks about collab, working collaboratively with staff families, community members to secure resources and support the success of a diverse student population. And that group rights would be a part of that.
So that would be under promote stakeholder trust, involvement, engagement in processing. I'm looking at three point three.
Uh-huh.
So, you're saying those last three bullet points?
Process of schooling through regular and transparent communications. Let's just look at all of them. So, you know, I would think that fits more into performance standard seven. Seven point three safeguards and values of democracy, equity and diversity. And, and there's another said doesn't fit in both places.
Exactly. That's true.
But do you need to be repetitive?
No. Because once you're doing it for one place, you know, you're doing it for another, so.
And as to not skew the score. Right, because the point is, am I evaluated? Am I being evaluated on that because we think it's support?
Is anyone who is further down the road going to be evaluated on what is or is not acceptable? Or is continuing the practice?
Right, and as long as you have it in there at some point, then.
Okay, so models promotes. Are we putting that under community or?
So we're on C three, bullet three.
Right.
And you also mentioned bullet four. Models and promotes multicultural awareness, gender sensitivity and appreciation of diversity. Knowledgeable about the laws, individual and group rights.
You're trying to put that under where, Tammy?
Well, I think that's what you're asking.
Okay, under professionalism or under? I was just saying, under promoting stakeholder trust, involvement, engagement. Uh, transparent communication. Uh, three point three.
Or do we want to?
Put it under.
Make that more, more highlighted under something like our professionalism? Because it goes all over the.
Again, that's what, what.
Throughout.
Mrs. Morissette was just bringing up, do we make it a community issue or do we make it ethical leadership issue? Correct.
I, I would think more like ethical leadership personally because you can't tell the community what to do, I mean.
No, that's just about the, no, not tell them what to do, it's just communicating to them that you understand the rights of the. You understand the laws and the rights of individuals. Group rights and responsibilities. Just, let's just let it go there.
And, and I think it's under community relations because this is talking about working collaboratively with these groups, understanding that there are rights.
Right.
Afforded to these groups and that, you know, that I, I can appreciate the diversity of the group, first of all, and that the superintendent can work collaboratively with that group. Those groups.
Okay. So I'll leave it at three point three. So then I'll go in the rubric. Is that what you're saying? Do you like that to be the rubric or do you like that to be a bullet point?
Promote stakeholder trust, involvement and engagement. I, I think. It applies, but the point here is that we're talking about multicultural. And this three point three doesn't necessarily.
Okay.
Capture that.
So make it as part of the last one? It's part of.
Seven point three.
Oh, part of what, three point six?
Oh.
Is that what you're saying?
Seven point three.
Oh, oh, so you're talking about standard seven?
Seven point three. Safeguards and values of democracy, equity and diversity.
Okay. I can curb it up.
I think, I think we needed a little more meat into that.
Okay.
In particular because is one of our key priorities right now. Is, is that.
Equity and diversity.
Okay.
Okay, good, so that, I think you're right, I think it fits better here. So, are we, we're going to include this in the rubric to support seven point three?
Correct, okay. Okay, I don't see anything in here, communication and relations under, in this document that allows us to have bullet points here. Maybe I'm missing something.
Well, wait, three point two, doesn't that support just the very first bullet? Promoting climate of trust and teamwork within the district. We could even say with the district and the community.
Which, where are you? C one, C one.
C one, three, the first bullet. Under three point two, we talk about demonstrating effective communication, not that, I'm sorry. Oh, that's promoting stakeholder trust, involvement and engagement in the process through communication. And then we're saying we're promoting a climate of trust and teamwork within the district. I mean, we could elaborate that, say within the district and the community.
Mm-hmm.
Think that does support.
So you want to use it in the rubric or you want to change that to the indicator?
Yeah, that may be, we're separating those two, so, yeah, you're right.
So promotes a climate of trust and teamwork, you want that to be a stand, an indicator?
You're making like sub-indicators, right?
I'm doing.
Well, I, yeah, I was thinking, because this, this, as we have it in our draft, promote stakeholder trust, involvement and engagement in the process of schooling through regular and transparent communication. We, I thought we had talked about or had mentioned communication someplace else, let me see. Formal techniques to gain external, effective communication skills. Effective community relations, which does the role of media. Communicates with appropriate stakeholder groups. Under C two, the second bullet on the second column, communicate school and district goals, objectives and expectations to stakeholders. It's pretty much saying the same thing. It does say the same thing, I think. And this is clear. So, would you want to use that one as an indicator? Or?
Talking about C two, the second bullet point on the second.
Uh-huh.
And that be the indicator rather than? Then which one? Number one?
Three point three?
Oh, three point three, okay.
That one doesn't talk about the trust like the other one does and transparency.
You can add that to it. Communicates school and district goals, objectives, expectations to stakeholders to ensure public trust. Trust and welfare. To ensure public trust and, and involvement.
Do you know where that, I'm thinking that trust went under, just thought C one, the first two bullet, first two bullets.
Uh-huh.
Would fit under this establishing effective school, community relations and school business partnerships.
Three point four?
And under that, it would be promoting a climate of trust, facilitating timely communication.
Where's that?
And maybe even the third one.
The first and second bullets.
C one, maybe even the third one, initiating.
All under three point four?
Under three point four.
Okay.
What do you think, I think that.
Initiates, are you saying the third one, to initiates communication?
Yeah.
Facilities.
Okay.
Cooperation among staff regarding, well, among staff, no, I meant among the community.
So the first two, support three point four.
Okay.
Three point four, got it. So just to go back just a little bit, are we saying keep three point one in our draft? So develops formal and informal techniques to gain internal, external perceptions of the district?
And I, I added a word into that to say to gain positive internal and external perceptions of the district. We're going to have perceptions, but I want to force them to be positive. Do we have anything to support that, is what you're saying?
Mm-hmm. It'll see two. Can be a rubric.
I don't think develops is a good word, I think maintains.
Establishes and maintains.
Establishes and maintains.
Just like C two is worded.
Yeah, establishes and maintains formal and informal techniques to, to gain, to maintain positive internal and external.
Okay.
So take out develops and make that establishes. And maintains. Formal and informal techniques to gain. To ensure positive.
Yeah, that's.
Internal and external perceptions rather than the word gain, put ensure.
Got you, yeah. Good idea.
Yeah, that's what you're doing.
Right.
That is an I-N-S-U-R-E or E-N-S-U-R-E, thank you so much.
E N?
Preference, preference. Alright. Uh, demonstrates effective communication skills, we're keeping that, right?
Yes. Verbal and non-verbal. Formal and yes.
Promote stakeholder trust, did we say we were going to keep this one?
Yes. Establishes effective.
And we said we were keeping three point four, we have a couple of items from that root to add to the rubric. Understands the role of media in shaping, forming opinions as well as.
And media.
So there's, if we look at, I think it's C two. Let me make sure.
Can I ask, um, three point four establishes effective school, community relations. Again, establishes and maintains effective school, community.
Okay.
You can, you can definitely establish it, but maintaining it is a trip.
I think his interesting comment here, they've got is establishing a culture that encourages responsible risk-taking. While requiring accountability for the results. That's kind of a tough one.
Yeah, that's like.
Make them take risks.
That's like going to your stockbroker and saying, here's, you know, five grand, go put it, but.
But don't lose it.
Risky business, but don't lose it.
Exactly. This is, that's a tough, that's a tough order right there.
On you.
And how do you teach that to a child?
Pay me back.
Very, very hard teaching that to a child.
We won't be using that one.
Yeah, please. Let alone how you teach that to a superintendent.
How about that?
Well, expecting.
Jump, don't jump.
Yeah, right, you got to figure that out, girl.
Let's be honest. We're, we're, we're taking, we're, we're actually looking to the future in this, this virtual academy.
Absolutely.
And it, it's a, it's a leap of faith. An excellent tool, which I agree, you know, other districts are using it. But again, you know, but to hold you accountable for something that we haven't yet implemented, it's kind of.
Yeah.
Now, you know, it's daunting.
Yeah.
So, there we, there's a perfect example.
But it's risk-taking, yeah.
It is.
So we have to do it in order to establish a baseline and see where the improvements are.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah.
Anyway, we're digressing.
I think it's kind of exciting.
It's all good. I'm good with everything else, if everyone else is.
Mm-hmm.
How, how, let's see, how will we measure three point five, understands the role of media?
Yeah, I.
We were in. I'm suggesting for a change in language on that one.
Yes, I do. No, that was, that was.
Three point five, we changed three point four. I thought you were changing that one as well.
No.
Take away.
Three point four, establish and maintains, but three point five, understands the role of media, I mean. Where do we put that? Couldn't that, that just not be a part of suggested data that?
Very have perceptions of the district in three point one.
That's what I'm saying, so we could make that a part of suggested data documentation that keep in contact with media to promote positive.
Yeah.
Before, pos, you know, what we're talking about, positive procession, perceptions of the district?
Mm-hmm.
So that could actually be incorporated in three point one. Can we get rid of three point five?
Sort of perceptions.
And use it as a.
It should be one of the rubrics.
Okay, so use this in the rubric, okay.
I would think, when you don't even need to say under, well, yeah, understanding the role, but how to, but although, how would we measure that?
Well, we already do, I mean, every time there's a press release.
Yes.
We get an email about it.
Be evidenced by the press release on the website.
Yeah.
And in the, in the paper, I mean, it's evidence, so it could be part of the rubric.
Okay.
Well, we have that as a rubric already. Rubric on its system, proactively engages the media to convey positive information about.
So three point five can go away.
So don't even worry about this, okay?
Right.
Okay.
Okay.
So three point six then becomes three point five, okay?
Actually, one of the bullets under C dash two, almost to the very end, three up from the bottom, says works cooperatively with representatives of the news media.
So it's already incorporated in our rubric?
Under C, your C two here.
Okay.
Good, yeah, I knew I'd see it at some place, okay.
Join the club, come on.
Did we have C three?
Hey, Mr. Brown. Okay. It's one o'clock. Can we, can we please, can we take a break?
Yes, break.
I'm with you.
Thanks, everybody?
I feel like this is an exact team meeting.
I don't want to be.
We do eat.
Okay, but pretzels.
We do. Pretzels for lunch.
Are we finished with three? We are finished with three, yes. Okay, we're going to take a break. Okay, welcome back, and we'll commence, we're starting on performance standard number four, organizational leadership.
You have to make a suggestion that four point three, make sound fiscal decisions aligned with strategic goals, establish clear systems of fiscal control, accountability. Can we change that? Um, performance standard M three. The second bullet point down says collaborate plans and prepares a fiscally responsible budget to support the organization's minute mission at goal. Could we not use that terminology? Well, or.
I would, I would think, yep, I would think that this would be an example of four point three.
Okay.
Because it's more than just the budget.
Okay.
You know?
Well, then, and then going on down, demonstrates effectiveness and allocating necessary resources.
Mm-hmm.
Establishes and uses, establishes and uses accepted procedures for receiving dispersing funds, ensures that expenditures are within the limits approved by the board. That's all four point three, too. Is that, is that a bullet points for you?
Fiscal control, yep, non-instructional lines efficiently. And four point two, ensures, establishes accepted procedures, demonstrates effectiveness, support organizations, yeah, responsible for the. Um, yeah, so also part of that is four point two obtains, allocates, aligns, and efficiently uses fiscal and technology resources, but, so.
Where's that?
That is, that is four point two in our draft, so that sort of relates to that second bullet, but it's all, it's all in there.
Okay.
Um, so why don't we?
Combine those?
Yeah, let's see.
There way to combine them too.
Admins and lines and efficient uses.
On time, soon.
Makes fiscal, aligns with strategic goals, establishes clear, transparent systems.
Are they mutually exclusive or can they be combined?
I, I'm, I'm seeing some things that are, um, that could be combined, but some parts of that I think are important to keep. So that fiscal control and accountability is not subsumed in four point two, and I think that's important. Um, I, I'm okay with both of them, and we can use bullets two, three, four, five.
Okay.
In the rubric.
Okay.
Two, four, three, four. At four point three, we had already pointed to A four as supporting. Adding to the rubric to support that.
Yes.
When that, make, make, say that one more time.
A four. Four point three. We had pointed to performance standard A four as supporting documentation in the rubric.
Along with most of what's on the backside.
Right, standard four, right, gotcha.
Can all be a part of.
Yep, four.
Okay.
What'd you say, four point four?
Four point four.
You said what, three?
Three, three, four point three.
Four one, yeah.
Okay.
And I think, uh, performance M one, whole bunch of those are four point four, promoting protective welfare and safety of students and staff.
Okay.
Um, we've got that facilitating, um, classroom management, student discipline, school safety, worldly environment conducive to teaching and learning, it all falls under in the classroom.
We could also put list that one up to G four.
For four point four, promote and protect the welfare and safety of students and staff.
And you, you made several, so the first bullet.
First one, um.
Was it, was it?
It's all really inclusive.
Okay, just the four, okay.
Got discipline and.
All right.
Okay, let's see, we told it up here.
Four point four.
Yeah.
And over here.
I wonder if, um, bullet number two, communicating expectations regarding behavior to students, staff, parents, and others, that might fit in a rubric. M one, under, under the standard.
Now we'll chat about. Okay, so that also supports four point four, is that what you're saying?
Yes, but I wonder if like that could fit in the rubric where you could communicate the expectations to the students' parents, because discipline is always a fee. The second one is communicating procedures for handling disciplinary problems. And how you communicate, telling you to communicate, sounds to me like a rubric issue. Rubrics are going to be huge.
The smaller font.
The magnified. Twenty page document. Oh, you're trying to get done.
So, one, two, three, four. implements and enforces school district code of conduct and appropriate disciplinary policies.
Yes.
And procedures, I'm thinking is, is important.
Is that under here or is it under?
Well, I think it would go under, it would support four point four.
Okay.
What we have in the, down in the rubric under highly effective four, four point four is putting in place systems that create environments that inspire learning and minimize, monitor, and control the probability of unsafe conditions. I don't know where we fit that in. We could, some of this, we could actually delete, delete that, because I think these descriptions are better for the rubric than that is. See that, that one here?
This one?
Yeah.
Uh-oh, probability.
Probability of unsafe condition, I would take that out and put some of these, these disciplinary ones.
And you liked elaboratively plans and prepares a fiscally responsible budget to support the organization's missions and goals, as opposed to the third one in our draft? The one, right under the one we just crossed?
Yeah.
Okay. So make that standard number.
I'm going to include, um, M three, the second, um.
Okay.
Bullet, but remember, we're including the second, the third, the fourth, and the fifth under that, but it's, it's, it's related.
Okay.
And so here's some language in our draft that talks about those accountability systems, so clear and transparent systems of financial control and accountability are universally followed.
Yes, so you'll leave that.
That's important.
Right.
And are we keeping, uh, the first one, establishes clear standard operating procedures of.
Of day-to-day operations.
Yeah.
Okay. Is, is it monitors and evaluates?
Number one, we say monitors, evaluates, the management of day-to-day operations, is what you're saying? Is evaluates the right thing?
That's what I'm getting, say, monitors and administers. The management, rather than the word evaluate?
Four point one, she's.
I, I know, and I'm thinking, uh, do we want to say, um, implement, apply? Yeah, we, we just want to say monitor.
Yeah, monitors the management.
Or, or, how about if you just say administers the management of operation, of day-to-day operations? Because you're really the admin.
So you want to change?
Monitor and evaluates is included in admin, administration.
Right, so where you had day-to-day, you're saying something different, so are we changing some language in four point one?
Monitors and evaluates to me could be one word.
Mm-hmm.
Administers the management of day-to-day operations, something to that effect.
So that's what I'm saying, we're changing this four point one.
More like overseas, superintendent oversees the management of, of day-to-day operations.
But are we keeping operational systems?
Oh, I thought we called it day-to-day.
So that's what I'm, that's where I'm going, so we change that, of day-to-day operations.
We're changing that to read oversees the management of day-to-day operations. Does she do that though?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oversees the manage, oh, she oversees the managers who do the day-to-day.
Exactly.
Yeah, okay.
So.
No, I'm not saying she does, I'm just saying she doesn't do the day-to-day, that's what.
She sits in her office and beats bonbons.
Yes, hence my twenty pounds. Um, monitors and oversees, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, yes.
Okay.
Okay. Sorry, guys, we're, we're working on this.
Ooh, yeah, okay. I think when we finish four, I think we should be done for the day, because we're going to run out of time and we need to go into close for fifteen minutes.
So can we?
Let's complete four.
And we complete four.
Well, four point three, we had already alluded to referring back to A four.
Yeah, we, I thought we were, so we made a little adjustment or revision to four point one, we're okay, I thought we were okay with four point two and four point three.
Just change four.
Yes, point four.
Four point four, we referred back to G four.
Yes, which one?
Four point four, we had made references in G four.
I think, I think Dr. King, if we start to implement that part of domain M, it's getting into the nitpicking of everything.
Mm-hmm.
And that's what I'm reading on it, do we actually need to go into great detail?
Mm-mm, so some of these, um, yeah, right, so, yeah, like staffed it up and all that kind of stuff, right, it just, right, that's part of day-to-day.
Oversees a plan, exactly, so do we need to?
Mm-mm, I'm okay with that, um, just want to be sure that we want to keep four point four as we have it, promotes and protects the welfare, safety of students and staff, and then four point five ensures that non-instructional staff are focused on their role to support quality instruction and student learning. To me, that is part of day-to-day.
That's what I was going to say.
Yeah.
So take out.
Four point five, okay.
Because, and how would you, how would you demonstrate that?
So, you know, because it's not the superintendent doing all of these things, that would be part of what principals are responsible for doing. Or whoever the supervisor might be.
Desigbe. Okay.
Well, we definitely need to keep four point four.
Yes.
So we're at the, um, and then four point four, you wrote down there, the support for that.
Yeah, we have that.
Is M, those items that we mentioned here.
Yes, first, one, two, three.
Right, four point four.
We've got that.
And then the, so the second page of M four, M, domain M.
Again, that was all.
What would you want to do with that? Those are too much in the weeds, you're saying?
I think so. It extrapolates on that, but I just think it's, it's already incorporated in the day-to-day operations. That's how I.
You're talking about personnel management, too, isn't that in the human resources management?
Mm-hmm.
Section's number six, standard six.
Yeah.
Which that could be.
Making human resource decisions.
Standards, you said standard six, yes.
Our standard six, yeah.
Are you talking M six, is that what you're talking about?
Um, M five.
Five, fits our standard six.
Fits our standard six.
Human resource management. So it's, I think we're rushing for a little bit, so.
Because there is one, so M four, let's see, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, and eight, and nine. The last three bullets under M four, I think are, really need to be in the rubric.
Okay.
Four, four.
Or four dot, four point four?
No, just in the rubric.
In the, in the rubric.
Rubric for promoting and protecting welfare and safety.
Um, no, not for, for welfare and safety, but that is part of, I think, your day-to-day, so prioritizing projects, um, evaluating, um, that we've achieved our established goals, and communicating with the board our district goals and whatnot.
So that supports four point one and, uh, as a part of the rubric, you're saying?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, when you're submitting, putting those in the rubric, if you see the items that we have in there are duplications of that, so we would go first with this, this thing first.
Okay, okay.
And we can just cross those off if they're too duplicative. That's okay.
And what I could do is I could leave it if there's a question and just strike through so you can see.
Okay.
Before we take it out.
All right.
Yeah, we've got twenty minutes.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, so what, all right, so what process now is, we can get an update to this and then we, if we can email it to us, we'll.
I was going to say, what we can do is we can get this in one document and.
At a four?
Right, exactly, and get it to you so you can start to review, and so by the time, if we're going to do April the tenth, so by the time we come back, then we can all be working from, you know, at least we know what we've already made decisions on.
I will scan this and email it to you tonight.
Thank you.
And glance at performance, we look at four, make sure we aren't rushing it too much, then look at five and six and seven.
And we can keep in touch between now and, and April tenth.
Right.
To finish, to finalize this.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you for your input.
Thank you.
So you've got the, um.
I don't have it. Wait a minute, wait a minute.
Is that the top?
Oh, okay.
Oh, yeah, staff. Top, take out the word counsel, put staff, consult with.
Mm-hmm, wait a minute. Regarding that?
Yes.
Okay.
No, not staff. I would say not to, not staff, I would say to discuss pending litigation, that's it, just plain discuss.
Okay.
So I have a, well, let me clear up, the next item is we will continue the superintendence evaluation tool in our next work session. And, um, for item number seven on the, on the agenda, future meetings, April third, our normal school board meeting, the tenth is tentatively going to have our work session, seventeenth is our standard work session, the first of May is the next school board meeting for May, and the fifteenth is school board work session. So, to get back to our, to. So, hope to get back to our, to, two sessions a month eventually.
So, I make a motion that we accept April tenth as a, uh, school board work session from five to eight?
I'll second.
Okay, so a motion of second to establish April tenth as another school board work session, and it'll be scheduled from five to eight in the evening.
Five P M. to eight P M. for clarification.
Yes, so, Ms. Wright?
I'll pick up a few, if I want to call your name, Captain Kelly?
Aye.
Ms. Harper?
Yes.
Just a sec?
Yes.
Okay, and do I have a motion to go into closed session, close open session and move to closed session?
I make a motion to close the open session?
Okay, we have motion second to close the open session, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, any a motion to move into closed session?
Pursuant to the general provisions, article three dash three zero five B, the board will go into closed session to conduct collective bargaining and to consult with staff regarding pending litigation.
A motion of second to go into closed session for collective bargaining and regarding pending litigation, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, thank you very much.